Does that mean that the webinar is now streaming live?
Not yet.
The little thing says it is.
It's still buffering on my end.
It's the buffer. Every time I hear that, I think of that Godfather 2 or whatever. Yeah, we got a lot of buffers.
Not your life.
Okay, let's call to order the city council regular meeting in closed session for February 9th, 2021. And before we do the roll call, the city attorney has an announcement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The procedures adopted for this meeting meet or exceed the standard set forth in Governor Gavin Newsom's order N-25-20, allowing public meetings like this one to be held by teleconference to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. Madam Clerk, please conduct the roll call, and I will ask the mayor to recognize me afterward to confirm certain matters for the record.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Veros?
Yes.
Councilmember Asafar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Here.
And Mayor Hudson?
Here. Floor recognizes the city attorney.
Thank you. Based on the responses to roll call, the record shall reflect that all council members can hear the proceedings clearly. And if there are no objections, the record will further reflect that each council member believes, based on voice or facial recognition or otherwise, that everyone representing themselves to be a council member is in fact a council member. Seeing no objection, I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Mr. Mayor, with a reminder that all votes must be taken by roll call.
Okay. Thank you. If you would, please mute so that we don't sound like a broken record, and I will do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item is, we do, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
There are no changes or additions this evening.
Okay, I'll help you on this one. If you wish to speak in a public comment or regarding an agenda item, please click the Raise Your Hand button on your computer or *9 on your telephone to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the agenda item. You will then be unmuted when it is your turn to make your comments for up to three minutes. After a lot of time, you will then be remuted. Boards, committees, and commission meetings, there's a complete list of upcoming meetings, may be found on the city's website, www.sanramon.ca.gov. Subscription service is available at the link for automatic meeting and notification. You may contact the city clerk. This is one I'd love to give our former mayor's phone number out, but I'll be nice, 973-2539. Public comment is now open. Now is the time members of the audience are encouraged to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public are participating via Zoom, who will have the opportunity to make comments to the city council live through Zoom applications. Let's see if we can get a readout. Oh, yeah, we jumped up real quick. We've got nine people, 10 people that want to speak. Let's give it a couple more minutes. If it only hangs around 10 or 12, let's do two minutes today if we can, and let's see if we can get them all in on the first public comment. We're at 10. Okay. City clerk, can you call up the first one? I think it's Andrea Willoughby. Hi Andrea, you're up.
Hi, thank you. My name is Andrea Willoughby. I've been a resident in San Ramon for 27, 28 years, and was very active in the first round or earlier meetings regarding MUDS being turned into a nature center. And there were lots of different iterations of what that could be, but we settled on something, and the city was behind us. And I just don't know what happened. Not really sure why things have changed now, but I've got to say that there was a lot of effort that I put into it. And I love the idea of a nature center, not only for our community, but for, to bring people to our community, to let it be a destination, for nature, for healing, for positivity. I mean, how often do we get an opportunity like this? And as I recall, there were even big donors locally that had given a lot of money or said that they would sponsor a lot of money toward this project. So it looked like we were headed down the path of making it happen. And really, only recently have I heard that somehow those plans went awry. Don't know how that happened, don't know why, certainly don't understand it, and don't feel good about it. You know, why, why do we go through all this effort to, to let our voices be heard? And it's almost like we got played a little bit, that maybe we just got scooted down the road a little ways. I'm not really sure, but I can tell you that I don't feel a lot of trust about what's happening. And just want my voice to be heard that we need to have that trust from our city. So really hope that we revisit this and reconsider this topic.
Thank you, Andrea. We're going to keep it at two minutes if we can. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Chris, up.
Hello?
We can hear you, Chris.
Okay. My name is Chris Ng, and I'm a 10-year resident of San Ramon. I began to get more deeply involved with the city's planning in the 10-year Parks Plan meetings. And during that time, there was quite a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of strong voices for the Nature Center or for the MUDS project. I'm very discouraged to hear that Commissioner Bernbaum and the Parks Department changed their position. It was very hard for me to hear that they felt that MUDS was just another community center, and we had plenty of space. I don't think that they have a really good vision of what that entire property and that building could bring to our community. It is an opportunity for intimate venues that could be hosted through the city. And those intimate situations will come back, we all hope. I sort of feel that this move to try to discredit the Nature Center and MUDS has happened during a time when people are suffering from pandemic fatigue and demoralized about the state of our government, especially at the federal level. I also feel that there's a lot of increased density in the future of San Ramon, and many of those will be young families that will be coming here. And those young people have a much better appreciation for environmental issues and for the architecture of things that might sometime be deemed unworthy. And that building has been verified to have held up to 40 years, and many of those years being neglected by the city. So I would just like to ask everyone if they would please grant another hearing and another opportunity to save this beautiful concept and specifically the building from a wrecking ball.
Thank you, Chris. Got a bit of a, trying to think. I have a written comment from Frenette. Is she also wishing to speak? We do this? Well, we're going to leave you for last, Frenette. You think about it. Kim Williams. Let's bring in Kim Williams.
Here we go. Are you there? Can you hear me?
You're up.
Great, thanks so much. So my name is Kim Williams. I've been a resident of Danville for 29 years. I am the owner of the historic Becky House, built in 1866, the second oldest home in Danville, and the oldest building in downtown Danville. I was not involved with this MUDS project, Nature Center, from the beginning. I learned of it somewhere in the middle of last year, when I was given the opportunity to take a couple of classes and learn of the program, took the classes. They were outstanding, got very excited at the classes that were provided and at the prospect of what was to come on the MUDS property. Being an owner of a historic property in Danville, which, by the way, I purchased when it was in a state of disrepair, went through the Danville development process to refurbish it and make it the historic landmark that it is today. To miss this opportunity for MUDS, for San Ramon to appreciate the jewel that it is, not just the building, not just the history. If you've spent any time gardening, you know that to plant fruit trees, they take decades to mature and produce. What you have there is a unique and precious jewel that you must take this opportunity to grab and maintain. I look forward to taking my grandchildren there. It's something that's unique, that is precious, and I encourage you to reconsider your decision and to please support the effort to make it a nature center. Thank you.
Thank you. We're trying to hold everybody to two minutes here. Let's bring in Joyce Carr.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just have a quick word. When we were doing the reading on behalf of people, that we were reading their comments out loud, at that time, we made our participants from the public choose between submitting written comments to be read aloud or to speak on Zoom. But submitting written comments does not disqualify you from speaking if we're not going to be reading comments aloud.
Yeah, I figured pretty much as much. I just wanted to get down to Abram and Frenette and ask them if they wanted, depending on if other people came in, if they wanted to hold off for the second one or speak at the end. So let me take another one, and then I'll go to Frenette, if that's okay. Joyce Carr. Joyce, you're up. You're on mute, though.
Here I am. Okay, thank you. Good evening. I am Joyce Carr, a resident of San Ramon since 1986. I have two comments for this evening. First, I would love to see public comments received by email read aloud at each meeting. Now, I wrote this before I heard about all the, all the people speaking tonight, but still, I know this can take time, but it would help the residents know the concerns and feelings of others in San Ramon. Zoom meetings already take away the personal feeling of the meetings being together, talking, discussing, and not reading these comments even further takes that away. If you could limit the comments to two minutes, perhaps, that might help. Secondly, I watched the interviews for the Innovation and Technology Committee. A big concern from just about every candidate was traffic in San Ramon, and it's a big concern of mine as well. Yet, there is discussion for adding a lot of housing in the marketplace shopping center, Bishop Ranch, et cetera. These developments will do nothing but add to the traffic problems that we already have. Traffic congestion is a big part of the developments, and traffic congestion is not wonderful in our city and not what we want. You, the council, have said that you care about and want to know the residents' concerns. Please keep your promise. We are trusting you to support our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Frenette, sorry to keep you so long, but I thought you might want to go on the second one. Frenette, you're up.
All right. I've lived in San Ramon twice since the late 80s, and most recently about 11 years. I'm the founder and president of San Ramon Nature Park Foundation. All we are asking of you tonight is to reconsider your vote to tear down MUDS. That would end our efforts to raise over $4 million for the park. We are asking you to act in the best interest of the residents, using the most complete information. Without hearing from us, you can't have done that yet. Your decision to reconsider will demonstrate to the community you serve that you take your fiduciary duties seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Frenette. Ann, is it Svezos? Please correct me when you come on. You're up next. Did I get even close, Ann?
Yes. No, not really.
That's okay. I've been trying to get a council member right for about three years.
Okay, it's not, it's not every, it happens all the time. Ann Cavazos?
Second guess.
Yes, I've been a resident of San Ramon since 1996, so that makes that about 25 years. I was actually, I've been at MUDS when it was operating as a restaurant. It was a beautiful architecture. I really appreciated the fact that they were using the actual food or that they grew in the garden outside as part of the food that they served inside. And I understand that this is one of the first restaurants in this area that used this farm-to-table method, and I would really like to see that continue to be demonstrated. And I would like the council to reconsider tearing down MUDS. I understand that some people have spent a lot of time and a lot of effort raising money, and also that it was approved at one time to keep MUDS, and now the Park Department has changed its mind. So I do think that the Park Department should keep its promise, especially after so many people have worked so hard. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Abram Wilson, our former mayor.
Mr. Wilson is using an older version of Zoom, so I will promote him into the meeting.
Okay. There he is. You're on mute, Abram. Uh oh, we have a technical difficulty? Abram, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're up. You're good.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Like you, I've had the privilege of representing our city as Chair of the Arts Council, Chair of the Parks Commission, City Council, Chair of the Finance Committee for 12 years, and Mayor. I respect you all. Our city has always been fortunate to have residents who care. They support our city as volunteers, members of the commission and council. We would not have the city that we love without their support and participation. The residents of San Ramon have been fighting to protect MUDS, Crow Canyon Gardens, for many years. The residents met with the city council in 2020, presented a vision for MUDS that would enhance the quality of life via the programs and the nature and the follow city council laws. The city council deliberated and embraced the vision and improved the staff to engage so that we could continue to raise millions of dollars to understand, bring this to a reality. As you know, our city does not have the funds to accomplish this goal. Our city has other demands for our funds. We are fortunate that as our city continues to grow, the residents would take the lead and raise funds to save this structure for future use by the residents of San Ramon. We all know that once this building is demolished, it will cost two to three times more to build another one. I hope that this council will honor the words spoken on that deus, and the council would remember that your word is your bond. Agree or disagree, without that bond and trust, you have nothing. Let the residents show you and the fellow residents of San Ramon how this vision will enhance the lives of those who live, work, and play in our cities. Let the residents appear before the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick and Joy Randall. Is this a tag team, or are you looking for four minutes? You're still on mute, Greg.
Hi there. I'm Rick Randall, and yes, this is my wife, Joy, sitting next to me, and we have been residents of San Ramon for 10 years. We live about two blocks away from Crow Canyon Gardens, and we walk around there frequently, and it's been quite a disappointment to see that building go into disrepair. It's such a unique and historically significant building and has so much architectural, architectural interest and character that we would love to see it restored, and we think it would really help the property values in the area. We also think it would be a fabulous resource for the community, for the residents and the children to go there and learn about gardening and cooking and living more sustainably. We've already attended some of the classes, the garden and cooking classes that Frenette has organized, and they've been presented on Zoom because of COVID, and they were, they were fabulous classes, just attending them by Zoom. And I can only imagine how much better they would be if they could be held in person in that beautiful building after it's been restored. So we would very much like the council to reconsider its decision and to go ahead and allow the foundation to continue its efforts to develop the San Ramon Nature Park.
Thank you, Rick. Joyce, you have something?
I just wanted to say that my understanding was that the city wanted, or the parks wanted to just have another park with picnic tables, and we have already very close by in Mill Creek Hollow, you know, places where people can eat on picnic tables. And we really want something like the San Ramon Nature Center that can be much more unique and much more valuable to the community.
Okay, thank you, Joy. Sandy Ladybird Hunt.
Can you, can you hear me okay?
You're good.
Okay, thank you. My name is Sandy Hunt, and I'm a resident for 30 years. My experience with the location at MUDS was with the Crow Canyon Institute. I was a gardener and a tour guide there, and it has been an amazing journey working with the children and adults, teaching in the gardens and the canyon, and growing healthy food for the restaurant and for all the townspeople to gather and enjoy the harvest. There was even enough to share with the food banks. And the experience has gone full circle with the results. I continually come across folks and kids that are now grown up who have stories about their experiences there and the lasting impact. Recycling and repurposing such a unique building that has left such a positive impression. It's like patina on the hearts of so many folks. We would be setting a perfect example of what we are already teaching and encouraging the upcoming generations to do. They are already making great efforts to restore the planet, so let's be on their side and think green. After volunteering to give support in every way that I can for the Nature Center, it was because I was under the impression, and I understood that the plan was moving forward for the Nature Center, only recently to find out that the decisions with the council could just simply be changed. So I'm asking the council to reconsider their vote and to please see the value of being in favor of the plans of the nature park. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Our next speaker is Allison Hanson. Very good. You're good, Hannah. Go ahead.
Dear Mayor Hudson and council members, I ask that you please reconsider your actions taken during the January 26 council meeting to deny the members of the Nature Park Foundation the ability to present during a formal agenda item during a February city council meeting. The abrupt reversal of the prior city council support of the nature parks vision, which has always included the renovation, not the demolition, of the original MUDS building along with prior verbal commitments from city leaders that the foundation could formally present at a February council meeting is unacceptable. Since March of last year, community members have been frustrated, having limited accessibility and interaction with city leaders due to the pandemic, and it is disingenuous for the council to pull the rug out from underneath the many residents who have supported the Nature Foundation project while citizens have been relegated to attending online city council Zoom meetings. I also want to voice my concern and frustration regarding the city's timeline for posting the city council agendas, including the January 26 agenda item, which included the Parks Commission recommendation to raise the MUDS structure. The city posts agenda items in a manner so that San Ramon residents cannot adequately read or be prepared to comment at a city council meeting. In this specific case of the January 26 meeting, the mention of the Parks Commission recommendation to demolish the MUDS buried was, building was buried on page 162 out of 172-page agenda packet, and the agenda was not posted until late Friday afternoon prior to the next Tuesday council meeting. In addition to the short timeframe between the agenda posting and the council meeting, I also have great concern over the inability for residents to even access the agenda items on the council website due to the website not functioning properly. This past week, I attempted to perform an online search of the city's official website for today's meeting agenda, as well as for prior council meeting minutes. However, on several occasions, I received the following error message, "Experiencing technical difficulties, the website is inaccessible at this time." In fact, just last night, between the hours of 7:34 PM and 11:22 PM, I made 13 separate attempts to access tonight's meeting agenda, but the website was down. As leaders in our community, our city council should be taking actions during this pandemic that go above and beyond to ensure that residents are well informed of the issues and decisions that you are making on the community's behalf. Bearing a recommendation to demolish the iconic MUDS building on page 162 of the 172-page council agenda packet, not offering residents a website that allows readily available meeting minutes and agendas, and then refusing to afford residents a formal agenda item to voice their concern on the council demolishing MUDS is not consistent with transparency.
Allison, we're going to have to cut you off right there.
I have like, respectfully, there are people that went shorter. Can I have two more sentences?
Okay.
I respectfully request that these issues be addressed so that your constituents are not only provided timely information, but are also assured that their elected council members are doing everything in their power to demonstrate that they are protecting the rights of their community members to exercise their voice in local government decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Jacque Kirk, and then Luz Gomez.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, awesome. Hello, everyone. My name is Jackie Kirk.
I have that one right.
That's fine. I've lived in San Ramon for the past 30 years, and I raised all four of my boys in this community. I've been an educator my entire life and believe that turning the unique MUDS restaurant building into a nature center would be a huge asset to our community. I'm currently the director of Little Bridges, which is a childcare center with over 200 San Ramon students, and I know the Nature Center programs would be welcomed. Families already pay for a variety of enrichment programs for their children outside our area, and they travel to participate in them. What a gift we can give our community to update this building on this gorgeous premise, premises, where we could offer classes about our natural world and biology, geology, botany, horticles, or art, photography, healthy cooking, wildlife education, and natural art lessons. The opportunities for classes for people of all ages is endless. The value a nature center would bring to San Ramon is only as limited as our imaginations and creativity. We know there is a need and a desire from the families in the entire Bay Area for these types of experiences, and we have the opportunity to offer that at the beautiful and historical MUDS site. I urge you to please reconsider your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, and I'm sorry about that. I have a chance on the next one. Luz Gomez? You'll be our last speaker in the first public comment. Any others, we'll put on number 12. Luz, you're up.
Thank you so much, council member and fellow residents of San Ramon. This is Luz Gomez. I've lived in San Ramon since 1980, and I grew up behind San Catania Creek, and my kids went to summer nature day camp. So as you can imagine, this is an emotional thing that brings many warm memories. I just wanted to point out that the agenda item that I saw originally about this back in January considered this agenda item an update, and I really didn't realize that it was going to be an action item, or I probably would have shown up to that meeting. Residents, I believe, had a misunderstanding about a February meeting that might take place where we would all get heard. With, when that didn't happen, I would say that there is a unique opportunity for the council to allow the community to be heard. I think it would really be helpful to have another opportunity, another council meeting, where not only residents would get a chance to understand the whole picture, which is quite complex, but also but also the council would get to hear the residents and really understand where they're coming from. I also would like for the council to have an opportunity to explain what were the former agreements that were in place and what, if anything, can be done to uphold those now. So I think that's all I have to say for today. And thank you for considering today's comments. I know it's not on the agenda, but I hope that the council will consider putting this item back on the agenda, considering that, you know, it was really noticed as an update, not as an action item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Luz. Whoops, and we have, I believe, six or seven written comments. I have Jim Blickenstaff, Mary Lou Oliver, Serge, Jim Gibbon, Philip Stevens. We also have Fernet's written comments and Laura Carson. If anyone else? If not, you probably have them in your emails if you looked at them between the Costco members. And you know, I don't, I would prefer that this person had just chimed in if she could hang on till number twelve, the second public comment, because I think there will be more. And I don't, good. Public comment is closed. We're on to consent calendar. Did I make one comment before we get there? No council action can be taken at this meeting. If any council member wants to make some comments, please wait till item thirteen after number twelve public comment. Because I think we're gonna have at least one speaker.
Before you go on, I would like to make a motion.
No council action can be taken at. Okay, Martin. Am I getting this right? I mean, I would ask, let me, before Martin says anything, there is a second public comment. And then council comments. And I would really prefer if there's a motion you want to make, do it then if the city attorney says we're not out of line. You have comments, Martin?
I do. A council member may make a motion to reconsider at any time during the meeting. However, it does make sense to allow all members of the public who are wishing to speak on this topic to have their opportunity to speak before such a motion is made.
Okay. Thank you.
After the second public comment.
Okay, because I know Pat Boone will want to speak on the second. I've already closed the public hearing and it was Pat Boone that trained me not to reopen public comments. So we'll go to consent color items are generally routine in nature and acted upon with a single action. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to pull an item? Five-one through five-five?
I have not received a call.
Vice Mayor Perkins? Okay, do I have a second?
I can second.
Second, Vice, former Vice Mayor Zafar. Roll call vote, please. Unless there's, there better not be discussion. It needs to be unanimous vote. Go ahead, Christina.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Baros?
Yes.
Councilmember Zafar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
And Mayor Hudson?
Yes. Okay, that clears consent calendar. No further comments. We have two proclamations tonight I would like to read if I may. The first one is a proclamation of the city council, the city of San Ramon recognizing February as Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in nineteen twenty-six, famous historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson established what would become Black History Month to bring special awareness of African American accomplishments and their contributions to American history. And whereas the twenty-twenty-one national theme for the observance is the black family, representation, identity, and diversity. Whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the city of San Ramon continues to work toward an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the city of San Ramon is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community and supports the theme of honoring black families who are part of our city landscape. And whereas the city of San Ramon recognizes the past year has provided significant struggles for black families throughout the nation in light of serious events from social unrest following the deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and others, to living under the threat of COVID-nineteen. Whereas the city of San Ramon will join with the nation in celebrating the ninety-fifth National Black History Month by honoring the essential contributions, sacrifices, and accomplishments African Americans have made to the US as part of American history. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of San Ramon recognizes the month of February as Black History Month and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Thank you. That is for the February as Black History Month. That thing is long. I don't know how the mayor before ever did two of these. I have another proclamation of the city council, the city of San Ramon designated February fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one as African American Mental Health Awareness Week. Whereas the city of San Ramon recognizes the past year has provided significant struggles for black families throughout the nation in light of serious events from social unrest following the death of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and others, to living under the threat of COVID-nineteen. And whereas according to the National Institute on Mental Health and National Alliance on Mental Illness, some mental illnesses are more prevalent in the African American community as compared to other cultures in the United States. Whereas mental health and substance use issues and the devastating impact of COVID-nineteen are among the leading cause of health challenges for African Americans in our region. And whereas the city of San Ramon is committed to empowering African American residents by promoting the benefits of mental health services through education, advocacy, policy development, raising awareness, and decreasing the stigma surrounding mental health. And whereas the city of San Ramon is collaborating with local government agencies and community-based organizations to support innovative programs, expanding resources and awareness of them to enhance mental health in the African American community. And whereas the city of San Ramon supports efforts for local organizations to honor those who have or are suffering from mental illness and support efforts to strengthen families and their role in sharing history and shaping the future of our black residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of San Ramon recognize February fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one as African American Mental Health Awareness Week and offers support and hope for those in San Ramon's African American community who are impacted by mental illness and honors our black families. Sign by me this date. I thank staff, whoever wrote that, are two of the best proclamations I've ever had the honor of reading. Outside of that, there are no further proclamations or deferred consent items, city council appointments, or unfinished business. Let's get on to new business. And I believe, Adam, you're gonna be doing this, or do you have a lead-in who's going to introduce you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I will kick us off this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The Arts Advisory Committee is here to present their annual report this evening. The Arts Advisory Committee has accomplished a lot actually this year. Even though we had COVID and the pandemic and a lot of things have changed this year, we're really excited about what the Arts Advisory Committee has been able to do. They are also going to share with you the goals of what they have for the upcoming year. And you should be excited about some of the things that we'll have coming up. But with that, I will turn it over to the Chair of the Arts Advisory Committee, Jenna McCoy, and she will share the annual report for you.
Technical difficulties with unmuting myself. Thank you, everyone. It's nice to be here, council members and Mayor Hudson. So the Arts Advisory Committee, if I can get this to full screen here. Adam, okay, I've got it now. So the charge of the Arts Advisory Committee is to support and promote cultural and performing arts in San Ramon. We provide advice and counsel, recommendations, and feedback to the city and to the Parks and Community Services Commission. We provide feedback on the provision and selection and delivery of public art and cultural art programs within our city, as well as events and services. So we have seven members, myself as the chair this year, Dave Owens, our vice chair, Ofer Dalal, a new member, Patrick Gutierrez, Magali Lu.
Wait a minute, Vice Mayor Perkins, you interrupted. Go ahead. Did you have a question?
Are you not seeing a presentation? Okay, thank you.
And while I'm at it, Christina, would you find out, I assume Patricia Boone wanted to speak under public comment. I hope she didn't want to speak under the last one and I just blew it because I'll never hear the end of it. But is there any way you could check with her to see if it is public comment she wants to speak in?
I can unmute her and ask her.
Okay, let's wait till after Arts Advisory, then. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, can everyone see the screen now? Okay, thank you. Okay, so Scott Perkins was our former liaison from the city council and we have a new one this year. And we will be reporting on her participation next year. We also have our liaison, Will Dorlick, from the Parks and Community Services Commission, as well as official teen council member, Daya Madhok, and another teen council member as well. Additional members of our committee are Partha Mitra, Naina Shastry. And Adam, you are up on Muhammad's last name because you've been practicing.
This is a team effort always around here. It's Muhammad Rajbarzdehi.
That's what I would have said.
Exactly. So Mayor Hudson, you're not the only one that can struggle with names on occasion. So our accomplishments for twenty-twenty, one of the biggest things that we did was to review and recommend a selection of public art at the library this year. And I'm sorry, my notes got locked out. But we're very proud of this. We had a subcommittee that interviewed artists and made a recommendation. Our Arts Advisory Committee approved them last month and they're moving through to get approved by the, hopefully get approved by the Parks Commission and then will be passed on to you. So we're very excited about a new piece of art that should be coming to the library in the next eighteen months or so. We also review our current arts programs and the classes that are given throughout the city. We make recommendations to staff for improvement. And this last year, as COVID really impacted things, we were happy to see things move online and even some of the members of our committee were able to take their art online and present that to members of our community. We also selected an artist and commissioned them for the twenty-twenty Art and Wind Festival, which, as you know, was canceled due to the pandemic. So we're going to use Robert Grumman's art for the twenty-twenty-one Art and Wind Festival. And we're very happy to have him agree to do that this year. We also review and select artists for exhibition in the Lindsay Dirks Brown Gallery, the Al Costa Senior and Community Center, the Dordie Station Community Center, and the San Ramon Library and City Hall. And again, in twenty-twenty, we had kind of a mixture of events happening with the construction or redoing of the city hall or the community center and city hall. And then with COVID, a lot of our arts exhibits were postponed or canceled for twenty-twenty. And we're happy to have a lot of them come back for twenty-twenty-one, hoping to open those galleries soon. We also review public art proposals from private developments, such as the piece that you see here that should be going into Ulta's space. And we make recommendations for acceptance to the planning committee or the planning commission, excuse me. We also review and make recommendations to update the Cultural Growth Grant Program. And we review cultural growth grant applications and recommend grant amounts to staff. So again, in twenty-twenty, due to COVID, we had, we didn't have very many of these except at the beginning of the, very beginning of the year. And we're hoping that some changes to the program and opening of our theaters will again bring some more money in for upkeep on the theaters as well as allow some, some artist groups to be able to perform in places and in venues that they wouldn't necessarily be able to afford. We also encourage our Arts Advisory Committee members to attend a minimum of four arts events per year in San Ramon and to provide feedback. I'm going to sound like a broken record, but because of COVID, many of us were not able to attend in-person events. But most of us on the committee have been able to attend virtual arts events. Like I said, a couple of our members are artists themselves and have put together video, live streaming, and also recorded events that were sent out to the public in San Ramon. And many of us have been able to participate in those as well as share those with other members of our community. So we also provide input and review design for the San Ramon Public Art Project, which I talked about earlier. And we also review current arts programs and classes within the city and make recommendations to staff for improvement. We also select an artist to commission an original piece of artwork for the San Ramon Art and Wind Festival. And these are our goals for twenty-twenty-one. And we, because of last year's closure, we are not going to select a new artist this year for this year's Art and Wind Festival. We're going to use the one we selected last year. We also have and will review art gallery proposals and select exhibits for the city's galleries. Many of them are carryovers from twenty-twenty, but there are some new artists that will be joining us as the galleries open. We are also reviewing public art proposals from private developments. And we have been making recommendations for acceptance to the planning commission. We have done that in just the last couple of months. I think it was actually last month. And we're excited for a new piece that will be visible from San Ramon Valley Boulevard. We also will continue to review the Cultural Growth Grant applications and recommend grant amounts to staff. To give you a little bit of an update, we have had one and we are postponing approval due to not knowing when the theaters are going to open. So upon the theaters notifying us that they can open, we will again review this grant application. Another one of our goals for this year is to, again, encourage Arts Advisory Committee members to attend a minimum of four arts events per year in San Ramon and provide feedback. I believe that this year we will count the live or streamed arts events that are being held by citizens in our county or in our community. And we will be discussing those at community or our committee meetings as well. We also have on our agenda to review the five-year cultural arts plan for twenty-eighteen through twenty-twenty and provide recommendations on priorities for this year. So we, as Arts Advisory Committee members, are to be ambassadors for the arts in our community. We love to share the work of our Arts Advisory Committee and what we do in the city of San Ramon. It's one of the things I like best about being on the Arts Advisory Committee is we get to see our work in action and the partnership we have with staff is just incredible. Having said that, providing suggestions and feedback to staff on arts opportunities during and recovering from the COVID-nineteen pandemic is another one of our objectives for this year. during and recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic is another one of our objectives for this year. And we've already been brainstorming and looking for ways to continue to provide art to our community and how we can get that information out into the hands of the public. Okay, questions, comments, ideas?
Adam, do you have any last words? See, let me before, okay, before I open it up to council, let me see if there's somebody from the public. We'll open a public comment. I had one hand up, but I don't believe it's for this, but I will ask anyone from the public, any written city clerk about this item?
I did not receive any written comment for this item.
Okay, and we don't know whether Pat wants to speak this one. Tell you what, why don't you, we'll get her in, we'll ask the council, oh, she didn't. Okay, let's ask for council feedback or direction for this committee. Mr. Perkins.
Well, I enjoyed being council liaison to the arts committee for, oh gosh, it's probably been certainly more than five years, probably closer to ten. It's an interesting committee. They get to really do some interesting stuff by choosing the art, the public art, and you're working on the utility box project was, was really kind of a fun thing to do in selecting the artists to go there. I think people appreciate the, the different colored boxes around town now. They didn't realize they didn't have interesting boxes, but we do now, and that's really great. And the selecting artists to go into the galleries and then public art. And once every two years or so, we actually get a new public art in, in the city and then working on commercial projects and their art. It really is an active and interesting committee. I'm gonna miss it, but I'm now working, helping out the, the library team, and I'm looking forward to that. So thank you very much, arts advisory committee. You guys do a fantastic job.
Very good. Thank you. Who did Vice Mayor Safari? Just can't let go of it, can you? Go ahead.
Oh, branding. Well, Jenna, thank you so much for the report. I have to say, I got a sneak peek at the, when I was watching the Parks Commission meeting as well. But you know, it's a joy to be part of liaison, city council liaison to your committee now. Thank you, Vice Mayor Perkins, for swapping that out. It was, yeah, I attended your first meeting, and it was really, really interesting to see all the art you got to look at, and they really recommend. I don't know if you mentioned this or not, but the art basically, they, the different art pieces that are in San Ramon, and there is a map of that on our city website as well, which is, I think, phenomenal. You know, people can look at that as well, so. Thank you. I think your, your art committee is such an interesting and diverse opinions and ideas that would say, I find it quite interesting to hear the comments and you know how you go through that selection process. So appreciate you serving on this committee and everybody else who's part of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we are definitely an opinionated group, and we have some lively discussion and debate on art for our community. And I think we really represent the community well on our, on our committee.
Absolutely, yeah.
If there are no further comments, let me, can we bring Patricia Boom in and see what she, oh, go ahead, Mark, and then Sridhar.
I'll defer to council member Baro. See, I think he beat me to the punch on raising his hand.
Now you're beating, but go ahead, Sridhar.
Thank you. Thanks, Jenna, and to Art Advisory Committee for great presentation and for all your goals and like accomplishments, as well as goals for upcoming year. I'm definitely proud of our arts advisory committee. As a former Parks Commissioner, I had a good opportunity to work closely with your committee, especially as council vice mayor Perkins mentioned about our utility box paint. That definitely shows the community how important is our arts advisory committee role to bring arts within the community. And also, thank you very much for focusing on our diverse, vibrant community to deliver these goals, as well as whatever you accomplished so far. I wish you all the best for upcoming year. Thank you.
And to Mayor Armstrong.
I'd also like to thank Adam and Jenna for your report this evening. I've had the opportunity to listen in on one of the arts advisory committee meetings already. And, and I think that despite COVID, I think you all made some great progress towards your 2020 goals, and I look forward to seeing the upcoming projects and all the artwork and the exhibits and galleries. And let's just all hope we can all get back to normal soon where we can see all that in person. So thank you very much for your report this evening.
Thank you. And before we accept the report, I assume with, without any opposition, I want to find out if this is what Patricia Boom wants to speak to, rather than just assume she wants to speak on public comment. Can we bring her in to see if this is what she wants? Because she's been, her hand's been up for a while.
This is Pat Boom. I am technically challenged, so you haven't told me how I'm supposed to handle this hand, one up or one down? I will speak on public comment. Thank you.
Wait a minute, is this for, what we want to know is this, did you want to speak to public comment, which will be number 12, or to the arts advisory?
Public comment.
Okay, let me, we'll throw you back out, bring you back when we get to number 12. We still have one more report to do.
Now, do I leave my hand up or do I leave it down?
There's no way we are not going to remember you because you know where I live.
Yes, I do.
Okay, then we will accept the report without opposition. Thank you very much. Jenna, Adam, excellent report, and we will move on to the San Ramon Police Department Annual Report. Chief Stevens, are you here?
Yeah, I, I am here, and, and I hope Pat doesn't feel bad. She's not the only one that's technically challenged, so.
Oh, yeah, and I got all the names. Perfect.
Yeah, I don't think I have any tough names. If I did, I would have Adam come and do them for me. That was, that was pretty impressive. Anyway, it's my pleasure to present our annual report for the police department for 2020. I will say that I went into this really with the intention to try to shorten my presentation from last year. With that being said, I think I added two slides. So I will, I will try to move somewhat quickly, but I've got a lot of information to share. Let me try to share my screen to make sure that is working properly. Okay, are you guys seeing that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I hope that all of you were able to receive a hard copy of our annual report. They came hot off the presses last week. You were the first ones to receive them. And I will say that if members of our community are interested in reviewing our 2020 annual report, it is, as of today, posted on our website, so members of the community, they can take a look at that. And I do want to say a special thank you to one of my staff members, Kelly Bryson, who is the one that does our annual report. Every year, she does a fantastic job. It's not uncommon that I hear from other agencies disregarding the quality of our reports. I just want to say thank you to Kelly. Once again, she did a fantastic job. So this first slide, as I think all of you know, on an annual basis, we, we report what are called our Uniform Crime Reporting. These are the crime statistics that we report to the California Department of Justice. And the, the crimes, as you see here, are exactly how they are reported to the DOJ. And I've included about five years of data, just as a comparison. Now, some of you may recall when I did this presentation last year, unfortunately, I had to report that we had had a pretty significant uptick in crime for 2019, and that was predominantly in the areas of our burglaries and larcenies. And that's the two topics that you see highlighted here. You see a number in parentheses under the burglary structure, and that number in parentheses represents how many of those were actual residential burglaries. So you know, last year in 2019, as you can see, unfortunately, we had had a pretty large spike in our, our structured burglaries, including ninety-three, which were residential burglaries. And I'm sure that many of you are aware, there was a pretty significant concern, not just from the police department, but also our community based on those residential burglaries. I'm pleased to report that in 2020, that we have seen a significant reduction, really in those same two categories. Our structural burglaries were almost cut in half. Our residential burglaries were cut by more than half. We saw a significant reduction in our theft cases. And as you can see, at the very bottom, we have our total offenses, our total Part One crimes for 2020 was a total of eight hundred and fifty-two, which, as I'll get to in the next slide, is actually a pretty historically low number for our city. One thing that you may see that may kind of jump out to you a little bit is the amount of rapes that we reported in 2020. We had eleven, which is the highest number that we have had in, in quite some time. So I did look at those cases, and what I did find out is that one of those cases was actually a case from, I believe it was 2018, that wasn't reported until 2020, so we have to include that in, in our 2020 stats. But I also looked to see how many of those cases involved what we refer to as like a stranger rape versus a rape that occurred between a victim and a suspect that were acquaintances. And in all of the cases that we had, the, the victim and the suspect both knew each other. So certainly, it's, it's a number that's higher than, than we'd had the year before. And I'm not really sure what to equate that to, but as I said, one of those cases was an alter case, and the other cases were instances in which the, the suspect and the victim knew each other. We didn't have any cases of, of any, again, what we refer to as like a stranger rape. So I know there's a lot of numbers here, and before I move on, I wanted to see if there's any questions that the council has specific, related, specifically relating to our UCR crime data.
Any questions? Just go ahead, Sabina, and then Scott.
Thank you, Craig, for that report. Yeah, that rape number certainly jumped at me. Do we have any stats on domestic violence so that this ties in? Or we, you know, kind of a subset of, of, you know, because that's been, you know, you, you know this, and I've been asking about it all year because I've been hearing about it a lot more. And so I wanted to know if any of that is correlated.
Yeah, it's not part of my presentation. However, I did look at our domestic violence calls. I want to say I looked at it maybe in October or November of 2020, and, and our numbers were actually pretty consistent in 2020 as compared to 2019. So later in the presentation, you will see one particular area where we have seen kind of a, a concerning uptick. But at least for, and I know in some communities, I think they have seen some increases in domestic violence. However, in San Ramon, our numbers in 2020 compared to 2019 were actually fairly consistent. We didn't see any major increases in domestic violence crime in 2020.
And there's no correlation between the rape cases or domestic violence or?
Well, you know, I, I don't want to get too far into the specifics on these, other than to say that, that some of these cases actually were people that were in dating relationships. You know, so there's a number of different dynamics that can come into play on some of these cases. So there may have been certainly an element of, of a domestic relationship in some of these cases. I think that, that certainly was present in some of these.
Thank you.
Yes. I saw on the news the other night that many, many, many large cities are seeing significant upticks in their Part One crimes. Is that a? Is it only applying to large cities and small cities like ours are seeing decreases in crime, or are we unusual and we're one of the few cities that's seen decreases and everybody else is saying up increases? What, what's your, what are you hearing from Alameda and Contra Costa, chief?
Well, as, as part of, of this presentation, and, and it's going to be in an upcoming slide, you're going to see that we actually do compare some of our crime data with some of our neighboring agencies. And I know that specifically, you'll see it's Walnut Creek, Pleasanton, and Dublin. I know as far as those Tri-Valley agencies across the board, we all saw some fairly significant decreases in Part One crimes in 2020. And I think you'll probably hear me, kind of similar to the last presentation, we saw, I may reference a lot of COVID stuff because, because I think some of the data that I'm going to share with you tonight, I, I think we can draw a correlation between some of this data and, and really the challenges and, and the dynamics that COVID presented in 2020. So I, I've heard the same thing. I'm aware that I think many large cities are reporting some significant increase in, in both violent and property crime. However, I can say at least in the Tri-Valley for 2020, across the board, and, and even going into Walnut Creek, that we all saw pretty similar reductions in crime over 2020. And again, I think a lot of it maybe have at least, you know, partially due to the fact of, of the circumstances with COVID.
Just a point of clarification before you get off, that's got, is there a point, and I know, Sridhar, I haven't forgotten yet. Is there a, a number that defines larger, smaller, or what? I remember it used to be fifty thousand. We were going after grants. We're way past that. What is a larger city for anybody listening, or we just, what we think it is?
Well, I, I think it's hard to define because I think if, if you were looking in Contra Costa County, you know, Concord is our largest city, so I think on our scale, we would look at, at Concord as a large city. I think in Los Angeles County, a city the size of Concord probably would not be considered large. I consider us a midsize city in department, and this is more my metric. There's really no science behind it. I would say when you get into cities that are in the, the one fifty to two hundred thousand range, I think you're getting into large departments. Again, that's more of, I don't have any scientific data to, to, to support that. But as I look at, at, at cities and police departments, that's kind of the threshold that, that I look at.
I'd look at it the same way. We're the fourth largest city in the county, but that doesn't mean anything. I think you're online with what most people would think is what's large, what's medium, what's small, and medium makes sense. Sridhar, did I cut you off? Did you want to speak?
I'm, I'm good. Okay, thank you.
And you want to continue?
Yeah, let me move on. And, and so this next slide is, is really taking that data. But what it does is it factors in populations. So this is looking at the amount of crimes that we have per one thousand residents. And you can see that this number for 2020, ten point one four. I'll tell you, it's a, as I mentioned, it's a historically low number. In fact, we've never seen a number this low in our history, and I even went back all the way to nineteen eighty-four. And I looked at our UCI, UCR crime data from nineteen eighty-four till today. And previously, the lowest we had ever had was twenty fourteen, in which we had a ten point one eight ratio. So you know, again, as I, as I mentioned, twenty twenty was really a, a historically low year when it comes to crime, factoring in what, what our population is. And I was kind of surprised that in, in looking at the data, the highest crime year that we ever had was actually in nineteen eighty-four, which was our, I think, our very first year after we incorporated. And our second year where we experienced the highest crime rate was nineteen eighty-seven. And in both of those years, our ratio of crimes per thousand residents was actually up over forty, both of those years. So I was a little, little surprised to see that data. In fact, in nineteen eighty-four, again, which was our first year of reporting UCR data, we had a total of nine hundred and forty-four Part One crimes. That's compared to the eight hundred and fifty-two that we had this year. And, oh, by the way, San Ramon had about twenty-three thousand people in nineteen eighty-four. So kind of, excuse me, kind of interesting in, in looking at some of our historical crime data to see where we're at. So again, this was a very low year as far as crime. We saw a significant decrease in property crime, a more moderate decline in, in what we refer to as violent crime. But as you know, we always historically have had very, very low violent crime rates. And, and for a city our size, we are one of And and for a city our size, we are one of the certainly the safest cities in the country. So anyway, I wanted to share this data. Obviously, this shows the last 10 years of of our crime rates, but I even wanted to kind of give you a context of going back even further really of what this this 10.14 number represents.
Can you go back three years? We did form our police force in what July of 2007? You don't have to. I mean, but if there's any recognition or any difference after we formed our own force?
Well, I can tell you, I'm looking at the data now. So in 2007, our crimes per thousand people were 22.3. They went down every year up until 2012. Excuse me, all the way through 2014. So from from 2007 to 2014, literally, we saw a decrease in our part one crimes every single year during, you know, that first was a six or seven years after we formed as a police department.
I'd also point out in 2010, when the census came in, we found out that there were 8,000 more people here than we had been told from the California Department of Finance. So that 15.69, that big number actually drops. Point being, it's a good job.
Yeah, and we'll be, you know, obviously, we'll be interested to see what our new population numbers is. We were factored this off of 84,000 population. And obviously, the number could even be higher than that at this point, which would even drive that number down. I'm sorry, I had mentioned earlier that we were going to show a comparison between San Ramon and some of our neighboring partners. And the reason we have selected these agencies is number one, they're close in proximity and also fairly close in population. Last year during my presentation, it was the first time that we had ever included Dublin as part of this comparison. And we hadn't done it in the past, just simply because I think there was a little too much of a population disparity. But as you know, Dublin has grown pretty significantly over the years and, you know, they're to the point now where they are closing in on on Walnut Creek. They're only, you know, a few thousand short of being the size of Walnut Creek. So I do think that there, you know, at this point, we can certainly look at their data and and see how it compares. And, you know, I think what's interesting is, you know, San Ramon population wise, we are the the largest city of these cities we're comparing ourselves to. And with the exception of Dublin, we had the fewest amount of part one crimes. Dublin did beat us by about 23. But they're also, you know, significantly smaller than we are. And I will say that all of these cities in their own right are very safe cities. So it's not like we're comparing ourselves to, you know, cities that have, you know, crime issues or high crime rates. I mean, we're comparing ourselves to other cities that are very safe. And again, as I mentioned earlier, all of these cities saw some reductions in crime, pretty similar to us in in 2020 as well. And this is just taking that same data where, again, we are factoring in population sizes and breaking, you know, violent crime down and looking at it and also looking at property crime. You can see, again, violent crime, we have always been extremely low in that category. And even compared to these cities, you can see that there's a pretty significant difference in our violent crime rate versus the other cities. And even our property rate, you know, we are down in in the single digits. So, you know, again, just kind of demonstrating what kind of year it was and and, you know, I'm hoping we can sustain these numbers. I don't know if we can. We will see what what things look like as we start hopefully returning to some level of of normalcy. But 2020, certainly, we 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 saw some 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 crime statistic numbers that we were certainly pleased with. So this slide shows kind of our patrol events for the year. And again, we've included, it looks like about seven years of of comparisons. And you'll see kind of across the board, we saw decreases in in pretty much every every category. We saw decreases in the amount of calls for service that came into our dispatch center. We saw a decrease in officer initiated activity. And specifically, as it relates to that, I can tell you that that's partial, well, not partially, it's mostly due to my direction, to my staff. You know, for a large portion of 2020, we were really concerned about keeping our folks safe and healthy and trying to minimize exposures as much as possible. So it wasn't not quite a year where we were doing business as usual. You know, we really focused, we're focused on trying to keep our people healthy. We were able to go the entire year of 2020 without having a single one of our officers test positive for COVID. Now, in 2021, we've not been quite as fortunate. But in 2020, I think that, you know, part of of our approach and the way that we really tried to be safe and cautious in the amount of contacts that we had, it did, I think, help keep us healthy and and have the ability to make sure that our folks were available to come to work and respond to calls. But as part of that, we definitely saw a decrease in in some of these metrics that are listed here. My expectation is, is that as we get past COVID, whenever that's going to be, then we will kind of return to business as as normal, business as usual. I think there's some indicators that hopefully we're moving in that direction. And, you know, I fully anticipate that once we get to that, we will, as far as our self-initiated activity, will return to what it was before. And part of that, I'm assuming our calls for service and and you say our reports, we wrote almost 1,000 less police reports in in 2019 versus 2020. So some of these metrics don't make a whole lot of sense until you factor in the fact that, you know, 2020 with COVID really changed a lot of things in society. And and I think you can see some of those those impacts on some of these statistics here. Even you can see our alarms were down almost 1,000. So some pretty significant decline in a lot of these, again, these metrics that are listed on this slide. And this continues kind of that same theme. You can see that we did about half as many car stops in 2020 as we did the year before, and we wrote about half as many citations. And again, that was more at my direction to staff about trying to really minimize our nonessential contacts with the community. Again, I think as we start returning to normal, we will get back to to kind of doing what we do. We know that traditionally, traffic is one of our significant and major issues in our community. But the next slide is going to show you again, kind of a weird dynamic that we saw in 2020. Normally, I would tell you that if if a police department, whether it's us or any other department, that if you greatly reduce your traffic stops and your citations, almost assuredly, you're going to see an increase in traffic collisions. However, as I move to this next slide, you'll see that, in fact, we saw quite the opposite. In fact, we almost had almost 150 less traffic collisions in 2020 as compared to 2019. Our DUI accidents were down significantly. And I think this is pretty easy to explain. We know that we went months and months where our traffic patterns were nothing like what we're used to seeing pre-COVID. And and even though there's certainly more traffic now than there was during, say, the the spring and and summer timeframe, I still don't think we are back to the level of traffic that that we're used to seeing in our community. So again, just kind of some weird numbers that that as you look at this, again, normally, as a as a police department, you would say, okay, if we're doing less car stops and writing less citations and 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 data consistently shows this, that you will almost always see increases in in collisions. However, I think that there was such a reduction in our motoring public that, you know, the 293 collisions, I mean, look at 2018. In 2018, we had over 500 traffic collisions in the city. And, you know, we're what, 230 less, you know, in in 2020? And even looking at that a little bit further, and again, this data just continues to repeat itself. You see that our injury accidents for 2020, excuse me, were almost cut in half. We had 162 injury accidents in 2019. And we saw that number all the way down to 86 for last year, which is a really low number. We had 11 vehicle versus pedestrian accidents, eight vehicle versus bicycle accidents, and then 21 of our collisions had a DUI was a factor in those. And again, that's a reduction in all of those categories as well. This is a slide that I included for the first time in last year's presentation. And one thing I'll point out is if you look at the month of February, you'll see the total calls listed as 291. Obviously, that's not accurate, even even with COVID, that would be an extremely low amount of of calls for service. The issue that we had in February is that there was an issue with the link to the state 911 system that tracks all this data. So we did lose some data in the month of February. So although it says that our dispatch center received a little over 17,911 calls for the year, that number is probably closer to about 18,000, considering probably the data that that was lost. Couple of things that I think are worth noting on this slide, and I don't think you need to be familiar with all these numbers. But I will point to the the very bottom column, the 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 first metric percent of calls answered within 10 seconds. And you'll see that almost 97% of 911 calls that come into our dispatch center are answered within 10 seconds. And if you look at the next column, you'll see that almost 100, almost every call, 99.46% of the calls that come into our dispatch center are being answered within 15 seconds. And what that means to our community is that when you have an emergency and you call 911, you're going to be speaking to a dispatcher within a matter of seconds. And then, you know, what that means is that that's going to be the quicker that they can get the information, the quicker that they can get that information to our patrol officers and the quicker that they can can arrive and and respond to these these emergencies. So these numbers are fantastic. And, you know, our dispatchers are doing a great job. And I mean, these numbers, I would, I would be hard pressed to think that any other communication center is going to do any better than than these numbers that that our dispatchers are meeting.
Do you have any idea what the numbers would look like for the Contra Costa Dispatch Center that we used to work with?
I don't know. I can, I can try to find that data. But again, I mean, what I will say is that, as I, as I said a second ago, I think any dispatch center would be extremely proud of these numbers. And I, I don't think that there would be many that would be able to to duplicate, even duplicate, let alone do any better at these metrics. So the, you know, the second part of that, as I mentioned, deals with response times. And I think all of you know that this is a big thing that I look at ever since I became chief. This was, has been a priority for me. And particularly as it relates to priority one responses. And you see, we we have kind of the definitions listed below as to how we categorize our our priority responses. But our priority ones, those are emergencies that, you know, we need to get someone there very quickly. I was pleased last year that we had got our priority ones down to four minutes and 27 seconds. This year, frankly, I am beyond ecstatic to see that we cut 17 seconds off of our priority one response times from last year. In our, in our world, that is a huge number. That's a a huge improvement. I don't know if we can, if we can improve on that again next year. You know, our threshold is generally five minutes. We want to make sure that we have, you know, a a under five minute response time on priority ones. And and to be in that, you know, four minute, 10 second range is really fantastic. And even if you look at our our priority two and and priority three responses, again, we we saw significant improvements across the board. And I think there's a couple of factors. One is, I think we do have to acknowledge, as we mentioned, that we had less traffic in the city. So, you know, certain times of the day where we were maybe responding to an emergency in previous years, we might have more traffic that we would have to deal with. But also the fact that, again, I think, as all of you know, we're making more attempts to try to staff our sixth beat as frequently as we can. And that's not so much just because of calls for service. It's more specifically for response times. If we can have our officers kind of strategically placed in the six beats throughout the city, then certainly as we have a police call or an emergency in that beat, ideally, we're going to have an officer that is in that beat at almost all times that's able to respond. So I will touch on that a little bit again in a future slide. But I think really those are the two factors that led into such a fantastic improvement on our response times, which we're good to begin with. So one area, and I think, you know, most of the data that I've I've talked about has been predominantly positive. This is some data that that is a little more concerning. And as all of you know, there is a welfare and institution code 5150 that does give law enforcement and certain physicians the ability to place people on mental health holds. These are people generally that are suffering some sort of mental health crisis. Generally, they're a danger to themselves, a danger to others or gravely disabled. You know, most of the contacts that where we come in contact with these type of incidents are people that are suicidal or are threatening to harm themselves in some way. And as you can see, in in 2020, we did see a pretty large increase in the amount of 5150 commitments that that we placed, you know, from 54 to 97. And, you know, unfortunately, even looking at the data a little closer, 35 of those 97 commitments were actually juveniles. And while it's concerning, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think any of us are necessarily really surprised at at this increase. I think we know that 2020 was a difficult and and challenging year for a lot of different people, I think, regardless of age. You know, as all of you, I think, are aware that the county is looking at developing a a community or or public health response to mental health type calls. We're looking at a lot of different factors, including just improving mental health services to the community. But one thing that they're also looking at is is the response to calls involving people in some sort of mental health crisis. So I think the plan is sometime over the summer, the the county public health department, who's taken the lead in this, hopefully, will be ready to roll something out. I think that really collectively as law enforcement, we are very open to it. And our, we certainly will be supporting it. We just don't know exactly what it's going to look like just yet. There's a lot of moving parts. There was a pretty big group activity that occurred a couple of months ago. In fact, I know our city manager was part of it. We had a couple of our staff members participated in in that collaboration as well. So there's a lot of 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 input being offered from not just law enforcement. We're just a small part of this. But certainly, as we get into the summer, I think we will see some other program introduced that that will deal kind of with 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 mental health calls. There still will be times where I think law enforcement is going to have to respond. You know, if there's issues regarding violence or weapons, you know, I think we still have to be part of that. But there might be some opportunities to introduce maybe counselors or clinicians or, you know, some other people that that are formally trained to maybe have them intervene in some of these, you know, situations, again, where people are having some sort of mental health issue or mental health crisis. So at some point, I'm sure we will hear more about that. I wish I could, I could share more with you. But at this point, I just don't think we know what it looks like other than to tell you that it is coming as something that our county is certainly analyzing and trying to come up with a plan. This slide just simply just shows an analysis of where we were at as a city and a police department back in 2007, when we created our police department, obviously, back then, our population was about 58,000 and we had 56 sworn staff. 13 years later, we obviously, as the city has grown, we've added actually 13 staff members. Even I can figure out the math on that, that we've averaged adding about one additional staff member a year during our history. And, you know, certainly, as as the, you know, city continues to grow, we will hopefully grow along with it to make sure that we're delivering the same level of service that our community is accustomed to us delivering. One thing I will touch on, you see that it looks, that there's been a reduction in our non-sworn staff from 20 back in 2007 to our current number of 19. And the reason that we've actually had a minor reduction in our non-sworn staff is that when we joined with the fire district for dispatch efforts, joined with the fire district for dispatch efforts, we actually were able to pare down our record staff. Because prior to that, we had to have record staff working not necessarily around the clock, but working extended hours when we started contracting with the fire district for dispatch services at this point now. All of the after-hours records functions are actually handled by dispatchers. So our record staff now, they simply work normal business hours. And then records functions that occur during off-hours are actually handled by our dispatchers. So just to explain why that number actually has gone down by one. So I want to touch a little bit on staffing. In in twenty twenty, we hired eleven new police officers. And and, you know, the city manager can correct me if I'm wrong here, but to my memory, I don't think we've ever hired this many police officers in in one single calendar year. Our plans are to hire eight additional officers within the next six months. In fact, I'm doing five interviews tomorrow with some new applicants that are all actually lateral police officers working for other agencies. And then we're also planning on probably hiring another three to four non-sworn staff members within the same six-month timeframe. So this is a pretty big lift, you know, for, you know, an agency that maybe had a hundred and fifty, two hundred officers. This might be kind of normal for an agency that is our size to, you know, essentially hire twenty officers in a two-year period is a pretty heavy lift. And just looking at some future retirements coming up, I think twenty twenty-two is going to be very similar. So we literally could be looking at hiring about thirty new officers over a three-year timeframe. And I just want to say a huge thank you to my professional standard staff. They are the ones that deal with the recruiting. They are the ones that oversee our field training program. So all these new hires, we have to train them, put them through a training program. Our field training officers. So so they've just been doing fantastic work. We will continue to lean on them very heavily over the next couple of years. And also want to throw a shout out to our HR department, specifically Janice Keller and Sarah Monastis. They we frankly couldn't do this without them. They are a huge assistance to us and we we certainly appreciate all the help that they give us. You know, part of our business, we deal with injuries, you know, currently I've got two of my staff members that are out with long-term injuries and and that's just kind of part of our world and 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 we always kind of have to deal with that. And as we move move forward, particularly as we start moving past COVID, we are certainly expecting and anticipating that we will start to see increases in our calls for service. You know, we know that there are plans in place where that's going to see our our population grow. And as always, we're monitoring our crime trends. You know, last year are are really concerned and and one of the crime trends that was very concerning, as I mentioned, was residential burglaries. I can tell you a significant time, a crime trend right now is catalytic converter thefts. In fact, I just had a meeting about a week and a half or two weeks ago with all of my fellow police chiefs from the Tri Valley as well as CHP, and we are all experiencing this and have actually started some discussions to see if there's some work we can do regionally in collaboration with one another to see if that's something we can start addressing because it's really impacting beyond the tri-valley. It's really, it's everyone's being impacted, but certainly we're seeing it here as well. Toyota Priuses by far and away are the the most common vehicle where we're seeing these catalytic converter thefts. But we're always looking at crime trends and identifying crime patterns and coming up with ideas and solution and solutions and strategies on how to, how to deal with those. As we move forward, you know, yes, sir.
Catalytic converters, are they being sold overseas? Are they being sold at local junkyards? Are they being shipped out of state? Somebody's making money here. And so where is that money? Where's that transition occurred?
Well, I I think that in our preliminary discussions, I think that's really where law enforcement needs to focus. On a daily basis, we're actually catching people that are committing these crimes. Two weeks ago, we caught someone in San Ramon. We literally rolled up on him as they were underneath a Toyota Prius. And the suspect was literally, you know, his legs were hanging out from underneath the car, cutting off the catalytic converter. So we were making arresting people very consistently. But I think the kind of what you're referring to is I think we need to change our strategy and we need to go to where are these things being sold? And I think that's really where the focus of law enforcement needs to be, because if we can eliminate the ability to, for the suspects to sell these, you know, to a secondhand metal dealer or recycler, I think that's really the way that we as law enforcement, that's what we need to do. I think we're, if we're going to have an impact on this. So again, I think regionally in in the the local CHP commander was part of this discussion, so we will be looking at some strategies. And I think that's something that we will try to focus on is look going after these people that are going out and actually committing the thefts. We're still going to do that, but we kind of need to look at the bigger picture and and find out where are these things going? Who are they selling them to? And maybe some of those people, some of those businesses are really what we need to focus on and and be addressing right now. Because it's it's expensive. I mean, it's, you know, my understanding is on these Priuses, if if you are a victim of this, it's about a two thousand dollar replacement and repair job. Because they're not going under your car and and very gently unscrewing the bolts and removing the catalytic converter. They're going under with a solzol and they're literally, you know, cutting the exhaust pipes, you know, between the catalytic converter. And unfortunately, people usually don't realize it till the next morning when they go to start the car up and then realize, okay, something's significantly wrong. But again, this isn't a a repair. That's a few hundred dollars. These are some pretty substantial, you know, costs associated with it. So again, just to continue with our staffing, we are continuing just to patrol the the city center area with our with our beat officer that's assigned to that area. We know that that over the years, as that area continues to grow, that 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 area may eventually become a beat in itself. I think we are years away from that, but I just want to kind of put that on the slide to let you know that that's something that we will continue to monitor as the city center and Bishop Ranch area continues to develop. We'll closely be monitoring crime calls for service and to see if there's ever a necessity to potentially restructure our, what our current beat system is. And as I mentioned this a little bit earlier, we will continue to to do everything we can to staff our sixth patrol beat. And again, that's predominantly to make sure that that we have this excellent response times and that we can get anywhere throughout the city effectively and efficiently in a timely manner. So we will, we will continue in those efforts. Again, traffic, it was not a normal year for us in twenty twenty, but we we do know that that as as we we get through the the pandemic, we're likely to start seeing some of our more traditional traffic patterns and issues. And as you know, that's always a significant concern of our community and of our police department, and we will certainly address, you know, those issues and those concerns as as we get back to to more of a normal traffic pattern. I want to touch briefly on our community resource and crime prevention division. They are doing a lot of great work. They are the unit that oversees all of our social media posts and our social media programs. To kind of hit rewind on the the fifty-one fifty calls, we do something that's a little unique compared to most agencies. And we actually have some of the members of our unit, every fifty-one fifty that we have, they actually touch bases in 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 contact those individuals, usually about a week after the fact. And and really, all that we're trying to do is number one, just check on these folks, see how they're doing. And then also to confirm that during the process that they were able to make some connections or or learn about some resources that are available. And if if that didn't happen, then what what our team is doing is really trying to connect them with any resources and and connect them with with any sort of of help that may be out there for them. So it's something that I don't frankly know of any other department that does this, but it's just something that on fifty-one fifties, for the most part, when we, after the interaction in the past, we would have no more contact and 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 this is a way of just kind of following up. Let people know that, hey, we are thinking about you. Want to make sure that, you know, if there's anything that you need, if there's any resources that you're interested in, we can help make those connections. And then also in in twenty twenty, I had planned on starting a homeless outreach program in the community, and I've kind of put that on hold because of COVID, but I do anticipate that likely sometime in twenty twenty-one, we are going to start these efforts up as well. And we we've got a fairly small homeless population. However, it it's really kind of the same strategy. We'll be going out periodically, making contact with these folks and seeing if there's any resources that they're interested in. And if so, if we can kind of help connect them with those resources and get them any assistance that that they may be looking for. So I think sometime, I don't know the exact time in twenty twenty-one, but I think we will get those efforts started up and we will be doing some some outreach efforts with some of our homeless population here here in town. And as always, particularly within this division.
Around the homeless, have we connected them, any of them with the project room key, which the state is rolling out to put them up in hotels and stuff?
Not to my knowledge. And and as I said, we had originally planned on on starting these efforts last year, and and I I kind of decided to put it on hold again with the idea that we're trying to, you know, minimize our our exposures due to COVID. So but that will be part of our effort is, and we've actually had some of our staff going to some of the county homeless meetings throughout the county to make sure that we're, you know, abreast as to the programs that are available and connections that we can kind of refer people to. So I think as we, you know, kind of get our efforts ramped up and get the program running, then, you know, certainly, I I think we will be making those referrals and whatever, you know, other referrals are are available.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this will go away once COVID is gone, like the the governor's program where they're putting them up in hotels right now and motels.
Yeah, I I don't know. I know that there is a a pretty significant price tag associated with that, but I know, for instance, in Pittsburgh, I know that they've got a hotel where they're doing exactly that. So I don't know the future of of that program, other than obviously, you know, there's there's efforts being made and you know, frankly, San Ramon, we were very low. In fact, I think I sent you the the council, the the latest point in time homeless count that was done by the county, which was done, I think, I don't know, four or five months ago. And at that time, I think in San Ramon, we had seven or eight homeless people in our community, which is is very low. So we we don't have the 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 amount of of a homeless population that frankly, most of our neighbors have. However, that's not really why we're looking at these efforts. I mean, you know, we we know that a lot of these people are actually people that are working here in our community. And, you know, they're struggling to to get on their feet and 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 I think those are the people that we'd be looking to hopefully try to connect to and help them out with some resources. Others, they don't really have an interest in 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 any referrals. And if that's the case, that's fine as well, but if we can make contact with, even if it's a small percentage of people that, yeah, I'm interested in this and we can help make that connection, I think it's it's beneficial.
What what is the trend right now, especially with our neighboring cities like Dublin and Livermore? Because I heard like Livermore is growing pretty, the numbers are growing continuously. So I just want to understand if that trend is not going to catch up with the San Ramon.
Yeah, I I don't know the exact numbers, but yes, I do know that Livermore that they've seen a pretty significant increase in their homeless population. And, you know, again, I mean, this is a societal issue and and there are a lot of people that are a whole lot smarter than me that are trying to, you know, figure out what to do about it. And, you know, we're looking at it, I think, at on on just a much smaller scale here in San Ramon that, you know, if we've got, you know, five or six, you know, people that are homeless in our community, we want to see if there's something we can do to help them out. If we can, that's fantastic. And if we can't, then that's fine as well. But, you know, it it's something that that I think it's worthwhile and and I do know that some of our, you know, Concord has got a a significant issue with with their homeless population as does Walnut Creek. So we are not, we are not facing the, you know, some of the challenges that many of the other of our neighboring cities have. But again, you know, part of of I think what we're going to try to do is hopefully we can, we can help some of these folks out and and hopefully connect them with with some resources to where, you know, they will be able to find housing.
I think one trend, Shredar, I don't know if you were thinking of this, is the sale of RVs. I I've never heard of a time, at least in my life, where RVs have literally just flown out the door at these places and people living in the RVs. I know I discussed this earlier. We're going to have to take a look at our ordinance because these people park on the street and that's their home now and they are working. So the whole lifestyle is changing. People aren't going to spend four thousand a month for rent and find out that, well, I'm going to move back in or or your next year's rent is going to be forty-eight hundred. And they, I'll tell you what, Mercedes is making a fortune off of this, but it's something we're going to have to deal with. It's homelessness, but it's not necessarily the tent. And, you know, living on the freeway, it's it's a different kind of lifestyle and it's exploding. You go down to the coast, it's way past exploding. Anyway, go ahead, chief.
Yeah, you're you're exactly right. And I think you're right, at some of our of our homeless population, they are, yeah, they're not living in tents. A lot are actually living out of their vehicles and and that's probably maybe a little more common of what we see in our community. The only thing I'm going to hit on on this slide is is again, you know, we we are always working with our community, our businesses, our residents and with COVID, we haven't been able to do some of the social and community outreach efforts, you know, Neighborhood Watch and and you know, we've been, we we utilize our volunteer volunteers very heavily and we've not been able to utilize them much this past year. So we're looking forward to getting back to doing a lot of those things. I did want to promote our citizens view camera system to our community. If you have a residential camera system, please register your cameras with the police department. You, you can do it on our website. The link is there. You are not giving us access to your cameras. All you're doing is letting us know that you have some sort of camera or surveillance system so that if we have a crime that occurs in your neighborhood, we may give you a phone call or knock on your door and ask you to check your your video footage to see if you were able to capture, you know, the crime or a vehicle or anything like that. So I just wanted to plug that program quickly. It is something we utilize very frequently and appreciate all of our community members that have registered with us so that we know that that they have cameras. So to shift forward, as we move forward into the upcoming fiscal year in the future, we know that, you know, due to budget concerns, we're we're being very conservative. So in lieu, as in past year, me me telling you, I need a bunch of new cops, we're we're focusing more this year on on kind of reallocating and reorganizing our current staff. You see, I've got a position listed here that we're titling as a criminal intelligence coordinator, which is kind of a fancy title for a a crime analyst. And this is a position that really we've wanted to try to fill for about a year now. And what we're we're now going to do is try to do a little bit of a reorganization to try to create this sort of position. It's really become critical just to analyze, you know, some of our crime data and then also with the the implementation of our camera system, which I'm going to touch on that here in a couple of slides. So we're going to be looking again at trying to do a reorganization internally to create this position because I think this is someone that will help us in identifying crime trends. And certainly will be a huge asset to our patrol officers and our detectives to really make sure that we're using our cameras to really the best of their capability. And again, I already talked about at some point, as as moving forward, we will want to kind of increase our staff to again more frequently staff that sixth patrol beat. And at some point in the future, I would like to create a a special enforcement team in the city. And basically, that's a team that focuses on whatever a trending issue is, that could be a crime issue. It could be a quality of life community issue, but this is a team that really can kind of go out and be proactive and really focus on issues that are impacting our residents in our community and and, you know, at some point in the upcoming years, we would love to be able to get that team up and running. This is just a a quick staffing analysis, analysis, again, just comparing San Ramon to our neighboring partners. We're we're looking at at the amount of our budget. You can see that although we're the the largest city, we have one of the smaller budgets. And when you further break that number down to cost per resident, you know, you can see that Pleasant and Walnut Creek and Dublin are all pretty similar in their costs. However, in San Ramon, you know, our costs per resident are significantly lower. In fact, we're still below that three hundred dollar threshold as far as the the cost per resident goes. This is based on our two thousand and twenty one budget. So our cameras, I did want to give a quick update on that. As you all know, we started the installation of the cameras back in August of two thousand and twenty. And just for a reference, the picture you see at the bottom left of the slide is one of our automated license plate reader cameras or ALPRs. The camera that you see on the lower right is one of our situational awareness cameras. So all of our ALPR cameras are installed at strategic locations throughout the city. They have been tremendously useful and and beneficial. As you can see here, that within the first four months of these cameras being installed, we've already solved, you know, thirty cases in which these cameras were were instrumental in in solving those crimes. The situational awareness cameras, they're about eighty five percent installed and from what we're being told that hopefully by the end of either this month or the early part of March, that installation should be a hundred percent complete. These camera systems are really designed to complement each other. The ALPR cameras, what that camera does is essentially, and I'm I know all of you know this, I'm doing this more for the benefit of of the public that may not know the difference in the cameras, but the ALPRs are cameras that that take a still shot or a photo of a license plate. And then they then run that license plate through a data system, whereas the situational situational awareness cameras are essentially live video feed cameras that are recording all the time. Actually, they're motion activated, but they're they're capturing actual video. So just as an example of how we could use these is if, let's say, we had a crime and we were able to capture a license plate in the area of the crime, we would have the license plate and sometimes we'll get a decent view of the vehicle based on the quality of the photo itself. But we may not see distinguishing features. We may not see how many occupants there were in the vehicle. We will be able to go back after the situational awareness cameras are up and running and actually look at that video data, which we then would be able to get a better description of the vehicle, would be able to, you know, see how many occupants there were, maybe additional, you know, ways they were traveling, things like that. So, you know, these camera systems are really designed to complement one another. Again, we we're planning on getting all of our staff trained on the situational awareness cameras here within the next couple of weeks and certainly by sometime in March, we should have both of the camera systems up and running, fully functional. And I think that they are just going to be fabulous tools for us to really solve some of the crime that's occurring in our city. Any questions on any of that? Before I move on, I know we gave a presentation to council a few months ago, but I just wanted to kind of provide an update as to where we're at right now with it.
Keep rolling. We'll take five after your or after your.
Well, I'm on my last slide, so we're, thank you for for bearing with me. Obviously, the big news or or the 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 big plans for two thousand and twenty one is that we will be beginning the construction of our new public safety complex at twenty four oh one Crow Canyon Road. This rendering that you're seeing here is what our new communications center and emergency operations center will look like. In addition to the construction of this new building, we will also be completely remodeling the police department. And the north wing of twenty four oh one will become the new fire administration building. So we're we're going to have a complete public safety complex at twenty four oh one with police, fire admin, communication center, emergency operations center, and we're really excited about it. You know, this is a facility that is going to serve our our community for for many years to come. And just while I'm talking about the fire district, I do want to throw a quick shout out to the the district, to the fire board, to Chief Meyer and his staff for the amazing work that they have been doing recently as far as the the COVID vaccine distribution. They have been a driving force in getting the vaccine distributed and particularly to the senior community as well as the first responder community. I just talked to Chief Meyer today. They were out in Pittsburgh today. So I just want to throw out a a quick thank you. I hope our community really understands the level of work and and the efforts that that they are taking to really do their part in getting the 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 COVID vaccine distributed. So I just wanted to throw that out and and just kind of extend my my thank you to them for for all the stuff that they're doing. But anyway, with all that, and I know it went on way longer than any of you had hoped for, but I have finally come to the the end of my presentation. And certainly at this point, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Comments or questions? I would just say that I'm hearing nothing but good reports on the on the COVID vaccinations that you guys are running through, or somebody's running through iron horse middle school, but comments or questions from the council? Go ahead, Vice Mayor Perkins.
I I was particularly struck by the improvement in service calls for priority one because that's based on seventeen thousand calls. Now, not all of them were priority one, I recognize, but buried in that seventeen thousand, you've got many hundreds of a priority one calls and the fact that you were able to respond that much quicker than than prior is is outstanding. And I I want to congratulate you. The dispatch team is obviously doing their job and you guys are doing your job. So I I'm really pleased to see that that response time is where it is in in priority one, two and three. The citizens notice and obviously you notice and therefore we notice. Thank you.
Councilmember Veros and then Armstrong.
I can watch on the CBRT one response time because of my, a few months back, I had a personal incident while driving on Bollinger Canyon Road. One of the car in front of me just, for some reason, they got distracted and then just went ahead into the curb and hit the tree. As soon as they hit the tree, this car started burning. And the first thing I did is I stopped my car and used my Siri to call nine one one while running to pry out the door so that I could take out the passenger or the driver out of that car in four minutes. I still remember like within four minutes, I see that our San Ammon Police Department was there. And within like in eight minutes or below ten minutes, the half of the car was burned out. And then meanwhile, the fire department was there. Everybody was there so fortunate that driver didn't get hurt. We could able to get the passenger out of it and I'm very impressed about the way our San Ammon Police Department handled the situation because, you know, everybody was tense. Even while I was talking on the phone with that nine one one call, I was like pretty much like fumbling and because my mind was racing whether I should run and pry out the door while I'm running like to make a call, you know. So but the way officers came and supported the whole situation, they understood and I know the situation like the incident is not a good incident, but I was very glad that we have such an excellent police officer or police department. Thanks for that. And also, one more thing I definitely want to mention, Chief Stevens, that always glad to see you at our diverse multicultural events. You always participate, that gives more confidence within the community and like the importance that our police department give it to for our community services and that that means a lot for us. So, once again, thanks for all your great work.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Chief, I just want to thank you for that that comprehensive report and, you know, I, public safety is such an important topic for all of us in the city. It's, you know, it's our top priority. And, you know, our police department, I think, is the envy of the Bay Area. I mean, just the statistics bear out just what a great job our San Ramon Police Department is doing. I mean, we recognize as the safest city in California or one of the safest in the nation. It's just a tremendous accomplishment. And even though it has been kind of a strange year and some of the statistics may be skewed one way or the other, you know, due to the pandemic situation, you know, just the ability of the police department to adapt to the pandemic and still implement different initiatives, I I think has been tremendous. And I just want to compliment you and and the police department for a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Sabina. Then I have a public comment from Luz Gomez.
Thank you, Chief Stevens. This is probably the one report I really look forward to because it's such a comprehensive report. You know, we almost take for granted how safe we are and, you know, how I mean, like I say, we take our public safety here for granted in San Ramon because we're such a safe city. And these these data points really drive home, you know, what goes, what all goes into making us one of the safest cities. So I appreciate that. Thank you for the update on the cameras. I think we spent about a million and a half, so I'm hoping that there will be an extension of the police department and, you know, we'll, next year, we'll get a more comprehensive data as to how this has augmented our police department. And like you said, I've heard a lot of HOAs talk about partnering with the PD to kind of create that partnership of cameras. I I don't know what the percentage is, but seems like every home has a ring or a camera or something outside now. So it's a, it's almost like the norm how people are looking at this crime. One of the things which I really want to give you a shout out to, which you haven't mentioned, is how you handled the protests last year. I know it was a tough one for the police department, but you really stepped up and the video you shared, the way you handled it, the way you partnered with organizers, it was really commendable and something that they even mentioned at the protest saying, you know, we work well with the San Ramon PD. So you should be very proud of something, handling something which was something very tough and really stepping up as a leader there. And then I want to give a big shout out to your communications department. I think they're doing an amazing job with the social media and the communication. It's, you know, I kind of follow and get a lot of my news out of it, but they've been, you know, you've really done a great job of communicating, you know, creating that communication department. And that's how, you know, we do, we build community and and I think that's what the San Ramon PD really signifies as well that, you know, we are a community working together to make sure the city stays safe. So thank you so much. I haven't picked up my report from City Hall, so I'll go and get it from my folder. And so I have it. But yeah, thank you again for the report.
Thank you.
Councilmember Veros, you have a second one?
Oh, yes. On on the communication side, you know, this is a fantastic report, right? So as a council member, like we are having an opportunity to see this during the council meeting. But I really doubt how many community members would love to join or enthusiastic about joining council meeting and listen to something like this great report. I I would definitely like to see that. I remember you had town hall meetings in past. But if you can have some virtual calls, a couple of virtual calls with the community specifically about the police department accomplishments and goals as well as what's going on, that will be great help because, you know, people appreciate it, but when they see these numbers, they'll be understand much better and I'm sure they'll appreciate much more.
Agreed.
Let's open the public comment. Luz Gomez. You're up. And.
Voice is with.
Yeah, you. No, you're, are you, you're not muted either. This is weird. It's like you're about one twentieth of the volume you should be. A little bit, but not much.
Okay, well, I just want to thank Chief Stevens, especially for how you're handling the fifty one fifty's follow up. That's fantastic. And I want to put in a plug for as you build your budget for year fiscal year twenty two, it would be fantastic to see.
Luz, let me try something. I mean, I'm going to do something that's really out of the ordinary. I know you spoke at public comment the first time, but when we come back for public comment, would you come in and make your comments for Chief Stevens? Try it again, because you, nobody is picking this up. Nobody's hearing you. I mean, we can strain and and hear you. If if you needed to be at volume twelve to be heard normal, you're at one or two. So I'm going to do this if it's all right with you. I know that Patricia Boone wants to come back under public comment. We'll put you on public comment and you can do what you're discussing here at that time. And if that's all right, we'll close the public hearing portion except for Luz. If there's no other further comments for Chief Stevens, I'd like to say that we accept the report without any objections. And let's take a five minute break if that's okay with all of you. And we'll be back in five minutes after the recess and we will do the 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 very long city manager report then come back with public comment, of which I will ask Luz if she can get back in, if she can make her comments for Chief Stevens. So we'll take five. Okay, we just about back? Whenever you're ready, Christina. We're good? Okay, next on the agenda is city manager comments. City manager Gordon. Are they that brief that you're gonna leave it on mute?
I I probably could uh, leave this one on mute because I know we have more information to get through. However, I would like to bring to your attention, I know that the the council had an interest in following a potential uh. Um, let me make sure I get this right here regarding the delivery fee cap ordinance. Um, the county passed a delivery fee where um, there were some significant charges going on for food deliveries and things like that. And I know this council had an interest and requested I track that and follow that to uh, maybe consider that from a city level. But we were aware that the county was actually looking at an ordinance to um, to actually temporarily cap those fees. Uh, they have done so and they've capped him at uh, fifteen percent. And I believe some fees were being charged as much as thirty percent. Uh, so that actual uh, ordinance will also be in effect in the city as well. So um, I give you an update on that. Uh, we also uh, conducted an additional webinar for our business assistant program. And we now have a total of seventy-seven businesses participating in that. And as you're aware, the business assistance program is designed to help any struggling business that's looking to get some of the loans from the state and federal government, uh, help them kind of navigate through that and be a support to them. And we have seventy-seven of San Ramon businesses involved with that. And so that's, that's going well. And that concludes my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Good news. Any questions or comments from the city manager? If not, a little pre-public comment opening, I would ask if Luz Gomez can come back in and and try and uh, do her comments that weren't coming through for Chief Stevens. Luz, are you here available? Try it again.
Okay, can you, how are, how is it this time?
Oh, I can't hear a thing. Can you turn it? No, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay, fantastic. I have to leave and come back. Um, so Chief Stevens, I just wanted to say thank you so much. Wonderful, amazing report. Um, really kudos and thank you for the follow-up you're doing on the fifty-one fifties. And I wanted to put a plug for um, when you build your next year's fiscal budget to perhaps account for or plan for a pilot of an electric vehicle or two or, and the infrastructure to charge it. Um, and just to, as a reminder, the city of Fremont has a fantastic program in their police department that has been going really well and it's saving them money in the long run. So I just put in a plug for that.
Thank you, Luz. Okay, public comment is open, the actual public comment, item twelve. Uh, we did two minutes per speaker in the first round. I see two people. Uh, Pat Boom is first. I see three people, but Pat's hand is down. So Pat, can you try and get you in first? Since you've been waiting for a long time. There you go. Hey, you're on mute. Go.
And can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize. I wish I knew is the hand up or the hand down to speak? Nobody's telling me.
Up.
Thank you. Mayor Council Members, I am Pat Boom. I am a forty-nine-year resident of San Ramon. I'm a former mayor and council member. I'm requesting that the council reconsider the decision on the MUDS area at the Crow Canyon Gardens. Whatever happened with miscommunication about public comment is not important now. This is too huge a decision not to have public comment. If you're concerned about control of the area dictated in the memorandum of understanding with the Nature Park Foundation, similar to what is done with the memorandum of understanding for the San Ramon Historic Foundation at Forest Home Farms Historic Park. Please reconsider your vote on MUDS so that public can comment. I have one item aside from this, if you would bear with me. Uh, the San Ramon Historic Foundation is uh, putting a curbside crab feed on. And I wish to notify you that you go to sanaramonhistoricfoundation.org. You can buy your tickets and you will pick up your crab feed dinners at the Doerty Station Community Center on February twenty-seventh. The deadline is February twenty-second, so please go to the website and get your information about the curbside crab feed. But please reconsider your vote on MUDS so that there is a public comment. It's too important a decision for you not to get public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Uh, Gene Kuznick. And please let me know if I got the name right.
No, it's that Kuznick, but thank you.
I know. I was just being smart. Go ahead.
That's all right. It's a, it's a long, right. So anyways, I just thank you for for taking my my call. So I just wanted to um, just rewind the council a little bit about the history of MUDS from a different perspective. As both a former uh, park commissioner and now a current planning commissioner, this is something that um, I've taken a special interest. So historically, just a reminder that yes, MUDS was a restaurant, but MUDS failed. This, it was, the property was given to the city and then the city couldn't sell it. When I was on the Parks Commission, we took a survey about what to do with it. And the the most uh, the largest response from this, the community at the time was in fact to um, convert the MUDS into or sell the property for daycare, but we chose not to do it at that time. So just a little reminder about your decision, because I do applaud you for being able to to take this thoughtfully. That there were in fact over fourteen public meetings on this topic. This idea that there haven't been enough public comment probably is a little inaccurate. Fourteen meetings. This is something you acknowledged at the last meeting. In the time that I've listened to this being discussed, I will say that most of the public comments have come repeatedly from the same group of very active citizens, but they're still the same citizens. And we're not getting a wide new wave of citizens motivated on this topic. So in the last three years, it doesn't seem like this has really spurred a lot of community interest in a way that you might be being led to believe. Um, this group did have a memorandum of understanding and they were asked to raise the funds. If they haven't in in one year, there's probably no indication that that this will suddenly become more viable. You've done due diligence. You've listened to this. I urge you to just feel supported that you have done due diligence and that this was a a suitable decision by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Uh, DG, you'll be the last speaker. You're still muted.
Hey, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, guys. Hey, this is Dinesh Komandar. I'd like to thank uh, the mayor and the council for giving me this opportunity to speak this evening. Um, and many of you have known that I've called San Ramon my home for now, now that we're in twenty-twenty-one, I can say forty-two years. Uh, but like many of the folks who spoke earlier today, I'd like the council to reconsider this matter for the Crow Canyon Garden MUDS building and take some time to review your previous decision. I I'm sure we can look for a win-win situation for the city as well as the residents um, requesting to preserve this iconic building. Uh, from listening to the last council meeting, it appears the city has concerns obviously with the finances to restore this building. I would ask the uh, council to challenge themselves to look for an opportunity, look to see how the San Ramon Nature Park Foundation, who's raised so far a significant amount of money um, uh, can support and raise enough finances for this building. And and you know, there should be some type of time limit to be able to raise that. Um, I think if this can be done, this would be a win-win for all parties where the residents would be able to enjoy this venue and the city would not have to take on the uh, financial burden to restore this iconic building. Uh, thank you again for giving me this time to uh, to to discuss this today.
Thank you, Dinesh. Is there another speaker? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Uh, the item is before uh, the council, I say that because I cut Sabina off back to item number four. Um, anyone wishing, let's go to item thirteen, if they want to bring this up. Uh, where city council comments for the mayor. Get rid of that vice mayor Zafar. You're throwing me a curve. Sabina Zafar.
Oh, my apologies. I I think I have a new background. I should probably throw that in. I'll, I'll change it in a second. Um, so my, my thing was I did want to uh, propose a motion for us to reconsider um, item ten dot three uh, which, which was uh, the, and specifically option C, which was demolition of the buildings and look at some ways to preserve that building for historic purposes. Um, you, so that was something which I wanted to put in front of the council and see if anybody would support me uh, from, you know, uh, when the motion was passed to bringing this back and maybe reconsidering um, how we can prevent the demolition of those buildings right now and look at other alternatives.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider. Do you hear a second? Hearing none, I will second it for this discussion. The people that came before you tonight asked for a reconsideration. It is our policy, our process, the way we do things. Those wishing to have an item brought before the city council for consideration must request so during a city council meeting. If you decide to do this, it then, and Martin, please listen to this and then correct me when we get to the end of this. Uh, upon council approval, which would mean the vote that we're about to take, the item will be placed on the council policy committee agenda for further consideration. And I think that leaves it pretty much open for what uh, the motion was from council members Zafar or whatever the policy committee would look at uh, for the several things that we heard tonight, timeframe, whatever. But it is not something I can bring back. I can't second it. Uh, and I don't want to sit here and politicize this thing where I'm dividing up the people. If it's something you you believe is is done, it's cooked. If not, it will go to Shridhar Veros and Mark Armstrong at a policy committee. Have I done anything wrong on that, Martin, that you can think of, or is that pretty much it?
Well, I I, I thought I heard you seconded and then I thought I heard you say you can't second it.
No, I can't bring it forward. I can second it.
Oh, okay. So you you did second it.
Yes.
I would just also add that that you kind of touched on it, but the the motion should also include direction on what, as you said, whether it should go to the policy committee or not. Uh, who would be allowed to make presentations uh, at the, at a future council meeting? Whether and and what exactly is going to be considered? Uh, or is it simply a reconsideration of the entire item of of?
My understanding is recommendation three. Is that correct, Sabina?
Yeah, so if I can expand on this, my, I am specifically talking about recommendation C, which was on agenda ten point three. And for historical purposes, we look at how we can, we can maybe consider reusing this building. Um, I am not, you know, saying we, I mean, for me, it's uh, more important that we look at how this uh, in the overall architecture. Um, it may not be historical because it's thirty years old, but thirty years from now, it will be historical. It is something which is, I I think, part of San Ramon's um, history, how we've become a city. We are a very young city. Uh, we're only thirty-three years old. Um, and I would love um, my council's support, whether it needs to go to the policy committee. Uh, set it and set out a policy. Um, I'm, you know, I'm open to anything. My, you know, my only ask is that we reconsider um, specifically demolition of those buildings.
If I'm reading this correct, city attorney, that all we're voting on is to reconsider it duration. They've done their part by bringing it up tonight and it uh, will be placed on a council policy committee agenda for further consideration. That's, am I reading this right?
Yeah, so it seems to me the entirety of the motion is to bring it back to policy committee for their recommendation of uh, of point number three of of the three elements that were approved by the council at the last hearing. And the only other question then is, is it, this is not specific to the new proposal from the foundation. This is just a, this is just simply a general reconsideration of.
Yeah, let me add something. I can't, this is about as rare as it gets. I can, I don't think, Scott, you and I may have done two. I think the fireworks and the and the the elected mayor, and we didn't have a policy committee at the time. I mean, you may never see this again if you're on council for twenty years. Uh, it just, it isn't one of the things where you just try and, you know, keep bringing something back and bringing something back. I understand why the people are there. I, I didn't get it the last time. And I'm not gonna beat this to death when I'm trying to cram it down your throat, but this is the policy, the procedure. The way we've set it up, that if somebody wants a reconsideration, they must come before the council. And then if you vote to do it, it has to go to policy. That's Shridhar Veros and Mark Armstrong. Okay, and that's all. But I don't think you go much past that on public comment. Uh, there's nothing more to this. So there's a motion and a second to do that. Any comments from anyone else, or do you want to just take the roll call vote?
Well, finally, Mr., which is one more thing, Mayor Hudson. And and that would be that I just want to remind the council as they go into discussion that discussion is is limited to the procedural aspects of this matter and not on the merits of any design or even of the destruction or the the reconstruction of the building itself.
Okay, well, I don't see anybody. Oh, wait a minute. I can take it back. There's, I was looking at attendees. Uh, council member Armstrong. And then Veros.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as the city attorney mentioned, this is about the procedure and and not merit that we're talking about. From my perspective, uh, this item was brought forward to the council uh, from an appropriately appointed commission. Uh, the staff presented it in a staff report uh, with recommendations. Questions were asked by the council. Uh, the public comment was requested, a motion was made and it was voted on. And I find that the procedure was appropriate that we did back on the twenty-sixth of January. And so I don't believe a reconsideration is merited.
Okay, council member Veros.
So um, I have two young kids, right? So we regularly have a conversation about uh, eating healthy and having conversation about whenever we talk about eating healthy, the conversation comes about bringing food from farm to table, right? Uh, that's how I grew up. Definitely, I want my kids also enjoy something like that. That's like one of the reasons that I definitely wanted to uh, support and work with Nature Park. I was excited when they came with the plan. And uh, I was always supporting them at every event. Uh, like even in the sense at every point of time as a commissioner, uh, when they brought this up during our commissions. Uh, I I'd definitely like to support them in going forward, how they want to conduct this. And uh, one thing definitely, I was uh, pretty unhappy about how the Nature Foundation, Park Foundation President went on to the social media and attacked our commissioners and our city manager. Uh, that's uh, I do not condone such uh, actions. Uh, you know, like our parks commissioners, they take a lot of heavy lifting. You know, like our parks commissioners, they take a lot of heavy lifting. They did fourteen meetings. It's all volunteer work time. I know even the Nature Park Foundation, they do all their time with the volunteer work. And especially with all that work on top of it, our city manager did whatever he, in his capacity, he worked with the, with the Nature Park Foundation and communicated with them. But still going on to the social media and attacking the leadership council, that, that's not what the spirit of San Ramon, you know? See, at every point I want to support, as I said, so I, I would definitely like to support because one reason that I heard is that their issue was not heard or they didn't get a right opportunity to be heard. So that's one of the points that I'm okay with it. But I hope that in going forward, this won't be repeated. Like attacking our city manager or our council or commissioners. Please be respectful. This is like a great city and great community. We need to respect each other and work together as a community. So.
If there's no other comments, let's go ahead and take the vote. Roll call, please, city clerk.
Councilmember Armstrong?
No.
Councilmember Veros?
Yes.
Councilmember Zafar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No.
And Mayor Hudson?
Yes. So this will go on the policy committee. It's up to, the staff will contact you and probably go over most of the things you're talking about. You could vote exactly the same way there. But the discussion has to take place in policy and this is simply following the way, the procedure that we set up for our residents. So next item is city council member. Go ahead.
Let's give some clarification also because on the policy committee, there was a request and that seems to be the point of confusion for staff, or I'm sorry, for the Nature Park Foundation to, to present. And so it would be, Martin, if I'm off on this, it would be helpful for staff to understand is, if the council at the policy committee level or any level wants an actual presentation from the foundation as part of this reconsideration. I, I don't think I'm clear on that unless Martin was clear on ultimately.
Let me try. Let me try and then correct me, Sabina. The motion was really about recommendation three. If the policy committee looks at this, I mean, anybody can come in at any time, you know, and just start talking all they want. But what they're really reconsidering is not tearing down this building. And if policy listens to people that come in and discuss it, not necessarily a presentation. And they say, we need to give a presentation to council. We thought we were given a presentation to council. And the policy agrees that this is something that should go to the council. So they do, call it information only. Then we do it. I haven't heard one thing here that says we stop the process of what Parks is saying for anything except that building. And that's where it is at this point. So to me, you put it on, I mean, they're telling you that this was supposed to be an update. The next thing you know, we're tearing the place down. So I can't tell you, they're not going to come in here with a five-hour presentation. But my guess is that there's been a lot of soul searching here and people are saying we are about reconsideration to save the building and then we'll go from there. That's what I'm hearing tonight. If somebody sees it different, please chime in now and go ahead, Scott.
I absolutely agree with what you said, that the reconsideration is about the building.
Yes.
And not anything else. And so the policy committee will review recommendations regarding the building and whether it should be retained or in what form it should be retained.
Yep.
With, and in what form?
Yeah. And we'll build on that. We'll see what comes out of that instead of trying to predetermine it. You had a lot of people that we've known for a long time simply say reconsider tearing down that building. And that was what I heard in the motion.
Correct.
But more importantly, I know this sounds silly, guys, but you're never going to see something like this again. I mean, Scott, am I off? Is there anybody here that has gone through one of these reconsiderations before? Because I can't until I go back to fireworks. And heck, I lost on that one too. Anyway, council comments and then the mayor will be, I'll be as brief as the chief. Oh gee, just jump right out there, everyone. Come on, Sridhar. You're good. You're, you're rolling tonight. Go ahead, Sridhar. What do you got for council comments?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't.
Okay, councilmember Armstrong, he's through. What do you got? Because we do have a closed session.
No, I just want to report on the senior advisory council meeting I attended on the first of February. They appointed a three-member multicultural committee, this committee. The purpose of it here, I'll just kind of read it off their, their statement, the goal is to get seniors age fifty-five or older of varying ethnic backgrounds to better understand senior center operations, program accessibility and multicultural programs on how they can be improved and to meet the needs of the diverse San Ramon community. Steve Cox also provided an update on the senior nutrition program. He talked about the annual San Ramon Rotary Luncheon that was done as a drive-through back in December at the senior center and then provided an update on some handwritten cards that were written by some young ladies, young girls that were distributed as part of the meal program for the seniors.
Good. Thank you. Councilmembers Zafar and then Vice Mayor Perkins.
So don't have a whole lot of updates. I think it was the last couple of weeks, some meetings were canceled. I think we had the mayor's conference, but that's about it. They presented a report actually on one of the subjects I'm passionate about, which is climate action in San Ramon. Scored pretty high on that. They did all the cities in the county and, and I know I owe a couple of few some links to that, but I think that's worth looking at all the things we're doing as a city to really meet some of our climate action goals. So happy about that.
Outstanding. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yes, I, I sit as a member of the MCE Technical Committee. That's Marin Clean Energy. That's the power company that provides power to about ninety percent of the citizens of San Ramon. Let's say in their technical, we had a presentation going forward on what, what changes we need to implement to make power affordable and clean going forward. There's a curious phenomenon that's happening largely because more and more people are putting solar on their roof. Now, in general, one would say that's a good thing. But what's happened is that there is now so much solar in that timeframe from two to four P M. That we actually almost go that they have to start shutting off power from the big solar facilities entering the grid. But from four o'clock to, let's see, from four P M to nine P M, the net increase in demand is about thirteen thousand megawatts. So it just about, that's the net increase from four o'clock to nine o'clock. It's a huge increase and that's because solar is coming off the grid as the sun goes down and people are turning on their TVs and their ovens and microwaves and stoves. So what's happening is MCE with other agencies of its kind. In all of our future contracts, we're going to include a segment for storage. And we're talking about megawatts of storage. So that when there's so much solar on the grid, in fact, it is essentially free from noon to about four o'clock. Solar is, there's so much power on the grid that it's free if you can pull it off and, and store it somewhere. And then starting at about five or six o'clock, you start pouring it back onto the grid till nine o'clock and you can sell it at a profit. So even though there's some engineering losses between putting it into the storage and taking it out of the storage, you make up for the fact that you got it for free and now you're selling it at a premium. So in the future, we will be doing on storage with all of our future contracts. And then we had a presentation on green hydrogen. Hydrogen can be stored and then it can be used in fuel cells later at, at different times. There is a big plant out in Utah that's potentially coming online in twenty twenty-three or twenty-four that will create hydrogen and store it in underground caverns. And then in the afternoons, it will generate power on a fuel cell. So we're looking at opportunities to do a more green hydrogen. It's a non-polluting renewable resource. And I also went to the library foundation meeting and they're very interested in working with the city on the update of the Dougherty Station facilities. And looking forward to that participation in the Dougherty Valley, the Dougherty Station Library and Community Center. That's my report.
Thank you. On mine, I, I, I almost did these as they happened tonight, but I find out that when you have long reports, it just sort of gets lost if you don't do it. But the couple of things that we voted on tonight were extremely important and bear some special consideration. One, a special thanks goes out to transportation, who probably thought after Trevari, they didn't ever want to do anything again. But what they did with these Iron Horse Trail automated touchless pedestrian push buttons to me is a correlation to what Vice Mayor Perkins is working on with Innovate Six Eighty. We're innovating Six Eighty and now we're going up and down the Iron Horse Trail in San Ramon and, and making things modern, the way we will be doing. So you don't have to push buttons or, or wait for a light to change or something like that. And hopefully the overpass in a couple of years will just add to that. The other thing was something that came from Chief Stevens. Councilmember Armstrong touched on it, but it really bears reading just as much as the proclamations you heard tonight. San Ramon continues to be one of the safest cities in America. For the second year in a row, Safeway selected San Ramon as the safest city in California to raise a child and the ninth safest in the entire country. I'm going to repeat it. San Ramon continues to be this, one of the safest cities in the country. For the second year in a row, Safeway selected San Ramon as the safest city in California to raise a child and the ninth safest in the entire country. So you can only imagine how many cities there are in the country. If there's what, five hundred eighty-two here, Scott, or is it four eighty-two? I could lose track. I mean, it's, this is a tremendous accomplishment and it can't be just glossed over. The other thing that Vice Mayor Perkins just alluded to, something that's coming up. Lafta, the Limmermore Abnermore Valley Transit Authority and Central Cantacosta Transit Authority, County Connection are looking at going after a grant jointly for a hydrogen bus. And we were talking about many of the same things that you were talking about, just that it will be express Wallack Creek to Dublin with possibly one stop at Bishop Ranch. Odds are, and I'm betting on that, that one stop will be accomplished somewhere in Bishop Ranch. But this is the kind of thing that I've been hearing about that we want to do with a train forever. And this will be much smarter. It's important to note that Phillips Sixty-Six has closed their door to convert to hydrogen conversion. They're not going to be making fuels other than these biofuels. And Marathon closed their doors also. That's two of the five petroleum refineries. And I heard from one of their council members that they're looking to do the same thing, but it may take several years to accomplish it. This green hydrogen that you spoke of is the coming thing. It is a renewable energy. It's not just going to be about batteries and solar and electric. Hydrogen is coming back and many of the people that were speaking against it are now speaking for it. That concludes my report. We are somewhere over here. Here we go. We will move to a closed session, convene the closed session pursuant to government code fifty-four nine fifty-seven to perform an evaluation of the city manager. Where is Speedy? How are we doing this? Christina, you got it, R S D?
A separate Zoom link has been sent to your email.
Ah, then I better get on my email and get back in here and we can do this. All right, let's try that one.
You guys.
Are we coming back to this meeting?
Yes. Actually, we have to, got to report out. You know what? I have got to, I got to come out of this meeting to come back to it.
Okay, Christina, you here? Let me make sure there's no attendees that want to speak to this item. We have three people listed as attendees. Does anybody want to speak to item 14? Public comment for 14 is open. Going once, going twice, closed. Okay, we on Christina?
Yes.
Okay. The council has elected by a vote of, first of all, we're reporting out on our closed session. The council is elected by a vote of 5-0 to extend the contract of Joe Gordon, city manager, for a period of two years and authorize the execution of an amendment to his employment contract with the following terms: There will be a 3% increase in salary and a $5,000 bonus effective immediately. The contract amendment will be brought before the council for its consideration at a future council meeting. And is that good? Everybody's got that? We don't need to do a 5-0 vote in public again, do we, Martin?
No.
Future meeting.
Pardon?
At a future meeting.
At a future meeting, you're doing it? Great, then we are adjourned to the next meeting, which is actually two weeks from now, but there will be a special meeting on Thursday.
Apology, there is a typo on there.
Yeah.
I'm agree.
I'm 23? 23 is good. Okay, so we'll meet again on the 23rd for a regular meeting, and there is a special meeting on Thursday, the 11th at 6 o'clock, not the normal 7. We will see you there. Thank you for hanging with us tonight, and...
By the way, that will be the anniversary of our meeting from last year, the last meeting before COVID.
Oh. Just somebody bring a cake. Okay, we'll see you in 24, 48 hours.